And you kind of get, you get taken in and he says, "Look, Marty, this is what we're going to do. We want to get inspectors back in. We need to go, I'm negotiating with the, with the other countries and we just, we just, we'll put the wording in that you guys want, but we need this in order to be able to get at the UN security." And then it turns out that they really didn't care what was in their wording. They're just going to do it the way they want to do it from the beginning. And then after they get it, and then after they get, then after they get the resolution, then they paint the resolution as a war resolution and say, "Wow, we declared, we didn't declare war. There was never a war resolution. There should have been under the Constitution, the War Powers Act." So all I'm saying is sometimes I've found over the last couple of years that, and I, I pass, I work in a bipartisan way wherever I can, but sometimes I feel like I get burnt when I do.
Joanna Hopkins from Lincoln. Congressman Man, I think you made a good start last June with Resolution 55, the so-called Homeward Bound Act. But it looks like we're not going to get an exit plan, or at least what I would call an exit plan from President Bush by December. And I'm wondering if you would now, in order to force the Bush administration to start withdrawing troops, support Congressman McGovern's House Resolution 4232 to ban funding by the Pentagon for any further deployment and to spend money only safely to bring our troops out of Iraq and help Iraqi security and reconstruction or any other UN efforts?
I may do that in January. And I'm looking closely, and I'll be talking closely with Jim. The only glitch for me is at this point, I want them to have an election on December 15th, and I want, I think we have a moral obligation to try to have them, have that election, have as many people vote as possible and then help them set up a system. But yes, I am headed there. Absolutely, I'm headed there. Somebody over here said you support Congressman Murth's. Congressman Murth's proposal isn't exactly like mine, but I support it because we have to find something to coalesce around. One final point that I want to make--
But you may need to get to an actual funding ban, as we did in Vietnam, to bring the thing to a close.
Right. No, you're absolutely right about that. And I have voted against some of the funding as a way to try to do that. And then it gets painted as not supporting the troops, as you know. But yes, I am headed there. It's just a matter of time where absolutely, and I hope that more and more people will be there. And I think January is the time where they have a new government. Now is the time.
Good. Thank you.
One other point. If, if, I'd ask those of you who haven't read the exit strategy, particularly if there are more independents or Republicans who are here, it is not a political document. It, I went to great lengths to not make that sort of a partisan type of document, so that would be received more in a bipartisan way. But it was still attacked partisantly, but I tried.
Yeah. My name is Dorit Chakda. I'm from Bucksboro. And I would like to see in any policy of disengagement in Iraq, an absolute commitment that Iraq as a society and as a country receives the help it needs, whatever form that needs to take, in order to regenerate itself. Because right now, it is a devastated country. And Europe received a lot of help, and without that help, it would not have regenerated itself. Iraq is devastated. It's bombed. It has lost so many of its citizens. And I, I would like to for myself see a commitment spelled out in great detail as to how this is to happen, with funds provided that cannot be lost or stolen. And that bringing troops home is coupled with making sure that the Iraqis are getting back on their feet, because their country is much worse of now than it was when, when it was invaded. I mean, at least the infrastructure, the universities--
I agree. I agree with you on that.
Thank you. Tom Locken, I just wanted to point out to people that there's an organization called the Third Middle Six Area Democrats. And we're trying to do a follow-through of a forum on Iraq we had a couple of weeks ago. So I would urge you to get involved with your local town committees. They will direct you how to, how to work in this area to try to do things. We're talking about trying to adopt congressional candidates in neighboring states who are in New Hampshire or Connecticut or wherever. We're talking about joining with other organizations and coalitions to try to take action. But I wanted to ask another question, which is a little more complicated. I could take a minute. Marty, the more reading I do, I see that the problem is basically Islamic jihadism. It's, it's the people responsible for 9/11, for London, for Casablanca, for Madrid, they're religious fanatics. And what I see is, is not that they don't have a solution, but that they don't understand the problem. You don't invade an Islamic nation that was not a military threat to us, who the leader was a secular leader, repressing religious fanatics. I mean, that just doesn't make sense. So in order to apply, for example, conflict resolution, they don't seem to understand the problem. And I don't hear people talking about this. And there've been several books written about, you know, the nature, the characteristics of the 19 guys responsible for 9/11. They really were religious fanatics. And Al Qaeda exists in 40 or 50 nations, so that you, as has been mentioned before, you really need a coalition with the United Nations to deal with this problem which exists in 40 or 50 countries. But I don't hear any discussion of this from, from the Bush administration. Is anything going on in Congress that's examining this problem, trying to, trying to figure out how to deal with it?
There are discussions, Tom, there are discussions that are going on. You're absolutely right. As a matter of policy, in many of these moderate Arab countries, what, what basically happened was the, the people in power took, took over the oil and they let the religious extremists take over the education system. And, and we should have been more on top of that. Because we, what we have is we have all of these young people in, in some of the, in Saudi Arabia, just take the whole Middle East, who are into a religious system or an education system that's religi, that has religious extremists. And they are learning hateful things about Americans. And, and you know what? That fundamentally is what we have to think about. How are we going to use the, you know, our ability to negotiate, our ability to, to conduct diplomacy to get at that? Because I think that it's, that's at the core of how we solve this problem. And, and we let, we looked the other way when countries like Saudi Arabia, where all the rulers were really interested in is, "We'll take the money. We'll have a great relationship with the United States." And by the way, we've, we've got about 30 million people here, but we're going to let the religious extremists worry about education. We're not going to worry about it. And that's what's happened in a number of countries. And I think the answer to that is, we need to begin to think in terms of the education systems in many of these, many of these Arab countries. And we have, we've looked the other way. We've, we've figured all we want to do is have a good relation with the Saudis so we can get their oil.
See now, so in effect Osama bin Laden wanted to get rid of Saddam Hussein, so in effect we have helped their agenda by, by removing him, in terms of their agenda.
And what's really disturbing about it is if you put, took a poll in America today, you would find that close to a majority of Americans believe that we invaded Iraq because of 9/11. Today. I mean, if you talked, if you, if you talk to Kerry about the presidential race, he'll say, "Do you know today, people still believe we invaded Iraq because of 9/11?"
They did. It became our excuse.
Yeah, right.
Congressman, my name's Henry Nor. I'm a Sudbury Democrat, and I don't like to see Democrats lose to self-serving liars. So there are a lot of, probably 100 issues about how we should proceed in Iraq, but there are 1,000 issues about what to do for security here in the United States. I don't hear elected Democrats confronting the president on his thesis that we're safer here than we are because we're spending hundreds of billions of dollars in Iraq. His line that, "We're fighting them there so we don't have to fight them here," would be a sad joke when we're attacked here. So I'd like to ask you to help change the debate so that Iraq is less a part of our daily discussion on how to make the United States safer.
Great. Good point. The oil companies, I mean, if you look at the tax breaks that they've gotten and the, and how they've been able to increase their profits, record profits with the price of gasoline, and nobody seems to care. You mentioned prescription drugs. The end of this year, the beginning of the year, the new prescription drug bill is going to go into effect. It was written by the pharmaceutical industry. It was brought to the House floor at 2:30 in the morning, and they kept, I'm sorry, it was brought to the floor about 12 o'clock. They had a vote on it, opened it at 2:30, and closed the vote because they didn't have the votes at 6:00 AM the next morning. I don't know, sometimes I wonder, I, I like to see, hear the outrage, because I don't know how they could get away with that. And the bill makes it illegal for the government to buy prescriptions in bulk for the 40 million people who are on Medicare in America. That's corrupt. How could something so corrupt happen and have people not be up in arms?
They're not impressed.
I, I mean--
Where is the Democrats?
We fought like hell on that. We fought like, there are a few of them, I guess, who maybe, maybe supported it. But, but I mean, I've had town meetings about it. It's corrupt. It is absolutely corrupt to have the, those people. And you know what's happening now? The same people that wrote the bill left the government with million-dollar jobs, with the same pharmaceutical industry who they wrote the bill with. There is a, there is a culture of corruption in Washington, and, and I don't quite understand how any, any party, be it Democrat or Republican, who has that kind of control, that abuses the public trust that way, could ever get reelected. I, I don't understand it, regardless of what party it is.
Nikki Spencer from Carlyle. Basically, back to the question about how safe our nation is after this battle for Iraq and during it. We've already been attacked, and it's not by a terrorist or anything. Over the summer, we had one of the worst hurricane seasons ever. And if you remember Hurricane Katrina, it was a category five storm. We knew it was coming for weeks. We knew it was going to be bad for days. And we had critical hours where we could have obviously protected ourselves from it in Louisiana and all the, the states that were affected. But we couldn't. And afterwards, the National Guard wasn't there. Where were they? They were in Iraq. It's, it's through no fault of their own, they could not protect the soil where they came from, the soil that, that they had sworn to protect through their service. And it was a horrible time, because we realized right then that it wasn't even something that was a terrorist attack, that was something that, you know, the FBI or the CIA is supposed to be looking at. It's something that our meteorologists could predict, and they are not even experts on national security. And it's, it's, it's just sort of an example of the scope that, that has been limited by the war in Iraq. I mean, we can no longer think extensively about Iran and North Korea as nuclear threats. We, we think about it and we go to the negotiation table, but our, our ability to negotiate has been so deteriorated by our, our credibility, and it's, it's our loss of credibility and in the foreign theater, that it's, it's really unfortunate. And Darfur, Sudan, if you've been reading any of Nicholas Kristof's columns in the New York Times, you've been reading how horrible it is still, after, you know, years after we've, we've said, "Yes, it is a genocide." Colin Powell got up there and said, "Yes, this is a genocide. The US respects that. So what are we going to do about it?" Silence. And we don't have to go to war over Darfur. We don't have to do anything there. We can do things that, that involve soft power, that involve funding, that involve backing up of, of resolutions or anything, and we can get around certain things. But we can't right now, because we are too embroiled in Iraq. Iraq was something that, that needed to be solved at some point. Saddam Hussein was not a nice guy. But it, we did it the wrong way. And we did it in a way that, that reduced our power. We tried to go into Iraq to prove that the United States is a powerful country and it could do anything on its own. But really, we're more powerful as leaders and not as loners.
Nice job. Well done.
Hi, Marty. I'm the local library director. And on this theme of fear, the two versions of the US Patriot Act Sunset/Sunrise Bill are apparently now in committee, and the senior senator from Massachusetts is one of the Senate negotiators on that committee. And other than calling his office every day, can you help us to get him to hang tough on that?
Yes, I've spoken to Ted about it, written to the Conferes about it. Those of us in the Judiciary Committee who opposed the House version of, of the bill have been active in terms of the Conference Committee. This is another, I don't know why we can't get this right. There really is no excuse for it. But instead, because they have all the, there are, there are a lot of things in the Patriot Act that, that make sense from a law enforcement perspective. But instead, it's sort of like the bankruptcy bill. I mean, they have to overreach all of the time. And, and I don't quite get it, to be honest with you. But the short answer is yes. Those of us who are part of the House Judiciary Committee have been sending letters and talking to members of the Senate who are working on this, and we will continue to, to do that. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mohamed El Jami. I'm a Libyan American. I'm a naturalized US citizen. I've been naturalized since 1990. I live in Chelmsford. I just, I, I just want to make a comment, and comments, and I hope you're patient with me trying to--
Sure.
--get this experience. It's, it's a pleasure to be involved in a, in a democratic process. I do, as a democratic activist myself, to help to bring democracy to Libya and respect for rule of law, I do appreciate democracy, and it's something that I have never experienced myself. And I can speak for 300 million Arabs who are living under either dictatorships, either theocratic or rentier, pure rentier state, where people have no effect whatsoever on the outcome. So I, I'm, I'm so elated that I, that you can listen to my opinion here, and you can listen to my point, and it makes me feel good about the democratic process, which I appreciate that opportunity. What I would like to, to, to explain is my view of the Middle East. The Middle East is basically what I see. It is, there, there are two types of tyrannies in the Middle East, and both are dependent on each other. There's a tyranny of religion, and there's a tyranny of tyrants, of despots. And both depend on each other. To classify some of these despots as, as secular is wrong, because when we look at Saddam Hussein, his history himself, he's a Ba'athist. He's, he's not, he's not a leftist, but he used the primitive ways of Islamism and Arabism to, to, to propagate his rules. So basically, he was a, he was similar to what you see here as Islamo-fascists. Basically, Saddam Hussein, 1991, he was not a secular. He used religion as a crutch. You know that he used "God is great" in the, in the, in the flag. And all Arab dictators are the same way. There is no one. Even the democratically-elected dictator in Egypt, I was born in Egypt myself, he is, he has vested interest in Iraq not becoming a, a democratic state, because Egypt is an oligarchy system. He's got a security system that has got 1.2 million people that he has to put on payroll to protect himself and protect the Egyptian oligarchy. There's an elite. There's a class struggle in Egypt. Let's, we talked about Al Qaeda. Let's remember that most of the Al Qaeda leaderships are Egyptians. Where did they come from? They came from the policies of the Egyptian regime. The Egyptian regime propagated Islamism. Today, I read, I have satellite channels. I see Egyptian, Egyptian TV stations. I read Egyptian newspapers. I can tell you, the US taxpayers, $3 billion a year goes to Egypt, and Egypt has the most anti-Semitic rhetoric in the world. Egypt, 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 you see the government-sponsored, government-run newspapers, they're elated. Every time, in, 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 in both titles, about Americans are getting killed. They call the, those called insurgency, which I call thugs, thieves, and terrorists. I have my 15-year-old son here. He's an American-born child. And he asked me, "What do you think of insurgency?" And I said, "I don't see these as insurgency. These are Ba'athists, jihadists, Islamists. These are people who just want us to go back to the rules of 1400 years ago." So it is a threat to US pol, to, 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 to US security and a threat to the only democracy in the Middle East, which is Israel. Now, I would, what I would like to see, I would like to see the Arab League totally dissolved. I don't like to see an organization based on ethnicity. I would like to see a, a common system, economic system, where Israel is part of that. And I want to see the genius of the Israelis in helping with water conservation, all of that, to, to become as part of it. But we cannot do this with, with social injustice to the minorities, mistreatment of the minorities. And as I told you, I'm from Libya. We have, we have Gaddafi desecrated all the Jewish cemeteries, forced the Italian settlers, who are Libyans, to exhume their dead, and he televised it live. This is the type of people we're dealing with. There is no civil way to deal with these people. We have the, we spoke of the UN, the UN as a, as an entity, as it stands right now, I don't think it serves American interest. Because what has the UN done for, for the US, for the Lockerbie, for the Lockerbie disaster? Gaddafi's still out. He paid, he paid his way out, 2.7 billion, and now he's got the legitimacy. He, he, he sought after, we let him off the hook, then he went back to, 750,000 people in West Africa got killed because he's part of it, the West African war. He's, the, the UN has failed us in, in many ways. As it stands right now, it doesn't serve American interest, doesn't serve American interest to have Libya, Libya, Libya-Gaddafi, to be chair of the Human Rights Commission of the UN. That's travesty. I mean, I'm speaking to you, my brother is, is a political dissident, 65-year-old man with advanced diabetes and all this, and the Libyan regime has put him in total incommunicado. And the US is trying very hard to get him out, and honorably so. The president has mentioned him, but they're not responding. But he responds to one thing: fear. When he saw Saddam Hussein coming out of a rathole, he responded to that. He came and he said, "Okay, I'll sing my praise. I've got all this. Take it away." He tried to buy a lease on life. Should we let him off the hook? I say, "No. Use him. Get all the stuff we can." And, and, but then, the only security for us, the only security for us, as you eloquently has said about the, the education system, is to go back and teach tolerance. Teach tolerance. There is a state, a democratic state, should not sponsor religion and should not fund religion. It should, it should basically support minority. And Arabs have to understand that they have, they have in order to, they have to come and, and make good on the past, oppressing Jews, oppressing Christians, oppressing all of this. We have to, we have to push for that. Minority, treatment of a minority is a barometer to the sincerity of all these rules. And all these rulers are nothing but despots, and they're a threat to American security and a threat to the West. This is not scare tactic. This is the reality. It's a grim reality. And the US is doing the honorable thing. It is putting a lot of sacrifices. I understand. But about the sacrifices, the problem is execution, or our way of doing it. And I appreciate the debate about this. What I also understand, what I also hope is that we put some limit to the Syrian government, and we're trying to do that, by the military port. Once we stop Syria, once we stop Iran, I think Iraq will be, will be, will be on the way to be democracy. Thank you so much for--
Thank you very much for your comment.
My name is Farouk Safi. I am resident of Acton. As an Iranian-American, nobody can be happier than Saddam Hussein is gone. After all, he was the cause of a million Iranian and Iraqis dying from the 10-year war. But from the beginning, I was opposed to this war. And I think it's ignorance to call that these people who are fighting in Iraq are thugs. Yes, I'm sure there are thugs among them, and there are terrorists among them. But the majority of them are basically nationalists. They don't want their country to be occupied. If anybody knows the history of Middle East for the last 1,000 years, armies from Kengis Khan, Kublai Khan, Ottoman Empire, British Empire, they all came. And they all left, or they were assimilated in the Iraqi or Middle Eastern societies. Many of these people, they don't want their country to be occupied. Period. I mean, this country, people haven't gone through the history that their country to be occupied. We never experienced here another foreign army to be here.
We just killed off the da'irs.
I'm sure there are many of them, there are terrorists among them. They, maybe Al Qaeda among them. But many of them also, I mean, the anti-American--
State Department analysis at this point, at least as of three weeks ago, but--
I read the media from there--
Five to 10% from out of--
I read the media from there. The anti-American feeling is boiling so badly. And I really think we need to leave.
Thank you. A couple more I want to give, particularly people in the other room, or people here.
Michael Tanner from Lincoln. I guess I have, I speak from some experience with, with the military. I was in both the Navy and the Air Force, the Air Force during Korea. I've studied this situation that's led us to this point very carefully. I followed everything. I read everything I can, can, can get a hold of, and I listen to everybody who speaks. But I've come to a conclusion. The conclusion is that we're not fighting a war now. We're opposing, we're, we're involved in a conflict with people who don't want us there. I agree with this gentleman. They want us out. There's one other fact that I have come to the conclusion on, and that is that there is nothing more that we can ask our troops to do. There is nothing more we can ask them to do. There is nothing that we're going to do about IEDs today, next year, or 10 years from now. They will still have a guerrilla operation, which is perfectly capable of knocking off our troops any time they want to. At the same time, what will we be achieving other than adding to the hatred that they already feel toward us? I used to be proud of my country. Today, I would not fight for it. I was in uniform twice, but I would not fight for it today. Because I believed that our country was always going to do the right thing. Something that was to the benefit of others. And as far as our military is concerned, we were there to protect this country. We were not there to invade others. We were not there to change their form of government. That is not our mission in life. Our mission is to have, do as much as we can without the use of force to improve the welfare of the people in our country and the people in the rest of the world. I would hope for a country that I used to love that would get back on that footing and pursue that path, pursue the path of negotiation. I haven't heard the word "negotiation" today. Perhaps it was mentioned. But negotiation is the thing that leads to the resolution of conflict. And that issue of conflict resolution has already been brought up today by the gentleman sitting in the corner. I applaud that approach. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. How about if I, I have time for one more question, and I'm going to be here too, so I'm, I'm not going to leave, but--
This is a question I had worked out from the start, and it keeps coming back to it. But what would it take for us to have enough respect for the Iraqis to work out their own destiny? We are not listening to the average Iraqi. We're listening to a public government, and we're getting all this publicity about people who really are coming in from other countries and causing a lot of the insurgency. And if we were to pull out and be advisors and certainly give the support that is needed money-wise, would they work out their own destiny? I'm not just asking you, but the gentleman that were, came from Iran and Egypt too. I mean, why are they not capable of running their own country?
Well, that's, that's the theory and behind the strategy of saying to them in advance, "We are going to pull our military out. You guys have to govern here. You have a wonderful opportunity. Settle it, solve it, and come out." Whether, whether or not it will all work in the end, if you're asking me--
Yeah, but I think they should do. It's, you know, democracy has to be by they themselves.
Remember a group of Sunnis, Shiites, and, and, let me make my point, Kurds, recently, last week said, "They wanted, they want to know when we're pulling out." I don't think that any government can survive, no matter where it is. I don't think that any government can survive, no matter where it is, if their government is viewed as supporting an occupation that's unpopular with 80 percent of the population. That, I don't think, is sustainable anywhere. So that's one of the reasons why I think that you'll see the new government say, "We don't want the United States to occupy." They're going to need an exit strategy, and I think we should let that happen. And what I'm afraid of is that we're using whatever skills we have to get them, "No, no, no, come over to our way of thinking," rather than to speak the truth. I don't see how any government— Could you imagine if in the United States, there was some occupying power, and 80 percent of the people in the United States were opposed to, and our political leadership said, "Oh, no, we want them to stay, everyone." You're all wrong. It wouldn't happen. All right. I'm going to be here, I'm going to be here for a while. It's been a long day. I started this morning in Hudson. But thank you very much. Great questions, great ideas, and I appreciate it. Good afternoon. Why is it that only 65 people RSVP'd, but— Welcome. There are some people in an overflow room on the other side, and I will go over after the town meeting to personally answer any questions on that side as well. We had a long meeting with the staff, and actually, members of the staff who are here, many of them knew. I'd like them to introduce themselves, because a lot of people are saying, "Who's handling what?" And I'm going to start with Matt Vogel. But then, I would like the staff to introduce themselves, so everyone knows who does what. And I didn't tell them I was going to do this. Matt, will you come down here, please? Matt, actually, he's the administrative assistant in my Washington office and worked for Governor Dean in the presidential campaign, and he set up this new town meeting format that we're using today. But Matt, you want to introduce yourself? Who else is here from the DC office? Bob, would you introduce yourself? You don't have to do it. You can do it from up there. Anyone else adjust as a scheduler? Emily Byrne, who's here? I just want to make sure people can contact the right people in the office. And thank you for all of your interest, and thank you for coming this afternoon. This is the second town meeting that I've had today on Iraq. And I also want to thank Senator Susan Fargo. We work together on a number of issues, including trying to make sure that Hanscom does not become an airport. And that has been a battle, but Sue, thank you very much for being here. Oh, excellent. And there's going to be a television show on that that'll be out soon as well, that we're going to be doing. The war in Iraq has been an issue that has received, I think, too little attention from the Congress. It basically has been a war that started with mistakes from the beginning. No weapons of mass destruction, faulty intelligence, intelligence that was manipulated. After Saddam fell, there was a series of mistakes, not bringing in enough troops to secure the country and secure a peace. In fact, many of you may remember General Shinseki, who told the Pentagon and said publicly at a hearing that it was going to take a few hundred thousand troops to secure Iraq. They fired him and sent him out to pasture and said he didn't know what he was talking about. I think today, we can all agree, a few hundred thousand troops were needed to try to secure the country. We sent 150,000 soldiers in harm's way without adequate body armor, without protection. We did not get them up Armin Humvees. The parts of Iraq with soldiers didn't get water. There was a series of mistakes made with the Iraqi army. Saddam Hussein's army basically were let go, and they should have been vetted and brought into a security or police force. Not once does anyone in Washington ever seem to admit a mistake. We don't acknowledge any mistakes in the intelligence, none in the manipulation of intelligence. We even deny, the administration denies that troops were sent in harm's way, even when questioned by a soldier, Secretary of Defense. Now, the question is, it seems to me, what are we going to do about this mess? I've traveled to Iraq a couple of times. My first trip to Iraq was in August of 2003. And what I found at that period of time was a, what I said when I came back was that there was a window of opportunity for Americans to win the hearts and minds of the Iraqi people, but that that window was closing because unemployment was higher, there was less oil available, there was more violence in the street, more corruption, all of this since Saddam left. And Iraqis had an expectation that at a minimum, with Saddam gone, that they would be a better country, that they would have a better standard of living, a better opportunity to achieve their full potential. But that did not happen because of the mistakes that were made. Now, the State Department did a lot of analysis about what ought to be done if, in fact, we get into Iraq. Those studies were ignored. So when I came back for my second trip in Iraq, I found a country where the window had closed, where rather than the first time, when you get the thumbs up from people and, you know, "We need this, or we need that," rather, they shielded us, the members of Congress who went driving zigzag up and down roads because of the potential of being attacked. I found a country where Americans had become basically sitting ducks because we were up front targets for insurgents. The insurgency has grown at a faster rate than we could ever, ever attempt to eliminate them. And what is an insurgency? I keep hearing the administration talk about the terrorists. But an insurgency, those insurgents are from within Iraq. One of the reasons why it's so difficult for our men and women in uniform is because there are groups of Iraqis who one day will be with the Americans cooperating, and then, whether a family member gets killed, or whether there's a family member, a victim of torture, or whatever it is, they then become insurgents. People come in and out of insurgency. 80 percent of the Iraqi people view the United States as occupiers. Now, how can one ever defeat an insurgency in a country of 25 million people? 80 percent view us as occupiers. I believe that fundamentally, that is the reason why we can't succeed. If the door is shut on winning the hearts and minds of the Iraqi people, the Iraqi factions, just a week ago, week and a half ago, the Sunnis, the Kurds, and the Shiites, all said the United States should have a timetable for withdrawal when the new government is established. So I don't see how we can continue in the present course, and we've been on this course now for two and a half years. And I believe it's a failed policy. But I want to get your viewpoint on it. And I want to, I gave a speech at the Brookings Institution about a year ago, calling for an exit strategy, and I laid it out, and I think many of you probably have it or maybe read something about it at the time. I believe strongly that we ought to be able to withdraw at least half of our troops right after the elections and the new government is instituted. The election's going to be December 15th, and the new government will take effect in January. In Washington recently, Congressman Jack Murtha, who's a conservative hawk Democrat from Pennsylvania, he's the chairman, or the ranking member of the Defense Appropriations Subcommittee. And he was a big supporter of the war. Even as I had an exit strategy, I went to see him, and he said, "I'm not ready to say that we should withdraw our troops yet, but there are a lot of good ideas in it." He gave a speech in Washington recently, and it did have a dramatic effect, because Jack Murtha doesn't take a position like that lightly. And we had a debate in Washington, and I want to spend a minute on this, because it's hard to follow what's going on in Washington sometimes. Murtha got a lot of attention all over the country because he's respected, he's an expert on the military. He never does anything without talking to military personnel first. There is no way Jack Murtha takes a position and says, "We should redeploy the troops, put them over the horizon, but don't have them in harm's way anymore. They're targets. We're losing too many kids." He visits Walter Reed Hospital on a regular basis. Now, there are over 2,150 troops that have been killed, but, you know, part of the story that really hasn't been told adequately is the fact that over 15,000 people have been injured, more than half of them are seriously injured. And when you go to Walter Reed, you see people without arms and legs. You see the post-traumatic stress disorder that we learned about during the Vietnam era, but we still don't have a policy for dealing with these vets coming home now. So it did have a profound effect. On the floor, the Republicans decided to pull all the legislative agenda and decided to have a vote on a resolution to immediately withdraw from Iraq. Now, Congressman Murtha had a resolution that was very specific about the way we should go about redeploying troops. They didn't allow us to vote on Congressman Murtha's resolution. Duncan Hunter, the Chairman of the Armed Services Committee, made up his own. One statement said, "Remove the troops immediately." Well, anybody that knows anything about military, if you're going to withdraw 160,000 troops, you need to do it in a way that's safe to them. Jack Murtha estimates that even redeploying all the troops under his plan would take six months to implement it. You can't just leave. You make the troops vulnerable. But yet, that's what they offered as an amendment. And the debate, and I don't know how many people watched it, but there are some low points of serving in the Congress. But when another member of Congress gets up and says that, you know, she talked to one of her constituents who said, "You tell Congressman Murtha that only cowards cut and run. Marines never do." This guy's 37 years in Marines. He's got two Purple Hearts and a Bronze Star, and they're calling him a coward. There hasn't been an intelligent dialogue in this country about the war and about what we need to do. And I'm going to have a series of town meetings in my district, and I'm going to send the clips and send some of the information to other members of Congress, and hopefully, all over America, people can get an opportunity to actually have an intelligent conversation about the challenge that we face in Iraq. And I know that there are a lot of different opinions about it, but I like to hear a lot of different opinions about it. When I have a town meeting, I learn a lot, and hopefully, people here will learn a little bit as well. But I think it's long overdue that Americans have an opportunity to have this discussion, and I appreciate you coming. I'd like to open it up to questions or comments. But basically, what happened is the evidence is now is overwhelming that they manipulated, first, the intelligence was faulty, secondly, they manipulated the intelligence. And I can't wait for Colin Powell's book on his presentation to the United Nations, because if he really tells the truth, it will be eye-opening. So I don't, the question of what are we doing as a nation is probably a better question. We're going to have an election in '06, an election in '08. And if, in fact, Americans begin to focus on some of these issues and realize that there have been more terrorists created as a result of our failed policy in Iraq, that our inability to conduct diplomacy around the world has cost us in this war against Al Qaeda, our effort against Al Qaeda. I will say that you didn't bring up the Department of Peace, which is a piece of legislation that you all have been advocating for, and I'm going to sign on to that bill because I think that it's important to send a message. But there isn't much of a dialogue in Washington about any of that. There just isn't. And I know a lot of you are probably frustrated about that there's been no oversight of the war. Part of the problem in Washington is that you have one party that controls everything. There is a culture of arrogance, a culture of corruption that develops when one party controls everything. That's why people are being indicted. That's why people will go to jail. There's an arrogance there. And I don't, you know, I think when Secretary Rumsfeld said, you know, "We're interested in the new Europe, not the old Europe," they haven't been interested in any of that. I want to give other people more time. I want to take more questions, but the basic, fundamentally, what we need to understand as a country is, it's fine to have military might to eliminate those who, Al Qaeda, where the real 9/11 war was. But we didn't do that. Instead of going after Al Qaeda and Afghanistan, we, the country, use as an excuse, 9/11, to go into Iraq, and I think it's hurt us. I really do.
With stupidity and arrogance, and until the Republicans destroyed the budget, you know, and had an incredible deficit. So I've now become a Democrat. I agree with—
I know there's a butt coming. I can see it.
And I agree, actually, with everything that you have said about Iraq, and I applaud you for being out in front of it. What I want to know is, how can the Democrats take this issue and nationalize it the way that, you know, they did with the Contract of America in '94, and get another party back in power, and use this to change power and government in Washington, and therefore have a plan to get us out? It's the only way I see we're going to get out of this until Bush has to get out of office in '09.
It has been really difficult to get Democrats as the opposition party together on a host of issues. And there is some who believe that, there's some who believe that the Democrats don't have to present a plan. Iraq, let's say, this is a complicated subject. What do we do now? It's easy to say, "We shouldn't have gone in. Those who voted for it made a mistake. Those who didn't, they think it's someone else's problem, so they don't want to have a plan for anything." And we need to get past that and say, "What are we really going to do?" And it takes some courage. And sometimes, it's like trying to balance a budget. To balance the budget or to get us to a point of fiscal sanity, tough decisions need to be made. You can't conduct two wars and provide four tax cuts and increased defense spending and expect that you're not going to bankrupt the future for people. So for some reason, in the United States, there is no sacrifice, there's no honest discussion. Now, I presented what my plan was with some pretty good ideas. I met with some experts before I did it. It was reasonable. Some people who were here criticized it, saying, "We should get out immediately, right away." Most of the criticism was, "Oh, that's a cut-and-run plan." It really isn't a cut-and-run plan. But it was difficult to get people to embrace it, because as soon as you have a plan, they attack it, and it gets discredited. And some Democrats, I think, believe that we can just run against the Republicans and we won't have to provide anything. I disagree. I don't, there are kids that are dying every day. There were 10 Marines Thursday night. And I think we have to engage the country in an intelligent discussion about what we should do. And there are no easy solutions in every, you could take Murtha's proposal or what I have. There are flaws in all of it, and there's nothing's a certainty. There may be a civil war. But we need to engage in a discussion. I think Democrats do have to say, you know, this is the direction we ought to go.
John Hudson, I'm from Concord. I'm also pastor of the West Concord Union United Church of Christ. There are people of faith who are on the other side of this issue as well. I just want to offer that as an idea. Doesn't seem to be too popular these days. This is a hard question. Do you think it was a mistake on your part to vote yes on the original Iraq War Resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Second question is, given the mess that we've created, and this— Second question is, given the mess that we've created, and this is a hard question that lefties need to ask themselves too, what is our moral responsibility now to the people of Iraq?
Right.
So, and I don't, I don't have any answers to that question, but that's something that no one seems to be answering.
Well, for one thing, part of the money that's been appropriated for Iraq included reconstruction money that is all unaccounted for now. Now, I don't know whether it's gone to contracts that were out to bid or what the deal was, but we don't even have inadequate accounting. We do have a moral obligation if we're going to preach democracy and an open press, not to bribe people to put stories in the newspaper that are to get our point of view across. And I also think, from a military perspective, getting into Baghdad with as few casualties as we did in this war was a great military victory. But what we don't take into consideration is, in war, there are always mistakes. Some people call it collateral damage, but there's been a lot of damage, a lot of deaths of Iraqis that people don't even keep track of. That helps fuel the insurgency. I think we have a moral obligation to help rebuild Iraq. We need to do it in a way that is not the United States occupying. Obviously, we need to keep our people safe who are there. But I do think that in order to help the Iraqis come up with some semblance of a system of governance, we need to help rebuild the country. And that is not going to be easy, but I do think we have that responsibility. You go through the country and it's been bombed to smithereens. And so I think we have a moral obligation to help rebuild the country. I also think, part of the reason why I don't think we could have just left in the middle of last year was, I also think that we have a moral obligation to help them with security for the December 15th elections and help them get a system of governance set up. I think we just can't, we told the United Nations we would help do that and I think we need to help them do that. But we also need to send a clear message that we're not going to be occupied, that they have a responsibility for their own security. We'll help them train. We ought to be doing more in terms of getting other countries involved. There are countries that want to help with the training of Iraqi security forces and basically, we tell them we don't need them or we don't want them. And that's the way we've been conducting ourselves. So that's a nutshell of what I think our moral responsibility. One of the reasons why the insurgency keeps growing is because of Iraqis who die and/or Iraqis who are tortured. Or, you know, Abu Ghraib was a disaster for a lot of reasons, not the least of which is it fueled the insurgency, it fueled terrorists. I mean, al-Qaeda has had a field day in terms of recruitment because of the way that we've conducted this whole thing. Go ahead.
My name's Bob Van Meter from Acton and I certainly appreciate your remarks and your response to the last question. And I know you've introduced your own resolution, but I guess my question is, will you support Congressman Murtha's resolution, which seems to be the most viable vehicle to express strong opposition to the administration's policy right now?
Yes, I will. In fact, I was critical of the Democratic leadership for not embracing it as soon as he came out with his speech. I was very disappointed at Democrats that ran in the other direction. I have a resolution that I filed with Neil Abercrombie, Dennis Kucinich, and a Republican, Walter Jones. And basically, that says we need to come up with a timetable and an exit strategy, strategy for success. But I'm for anything that gets a di— I was so inspired by what Jack Murtha did and what's more than that, the way that it seemed to capture the country. And I've been around there enough to know that what I want to do is I want to succeed. And sometimes you make compromises and all, so I don't think that I'm, you know, the only expert, have the only plan. So yes, I will support whatever moves us forward in this effort to bring troops home.
I'm Norman Beecher from Concord and I'm speaking as a lifelong Democrat. I think that we ought to be very careful to remember that we are seriously at risk in this situation. This is not a political battle just. We're almost as much at risk as we were in the Second World War or the Korea, or the Civil War. This is a big deal. And it's very important that the Democrats don't push the country in the direction of, for example, letting the insurgents take over, abetting it by getting out too soon. We have, we are building up a government and we owe it some protection when it needs it. We should go as soon as they can take over. But remember that no Arab country has had an effective military. The Arab culture does not support military discipline and commitment very well. And we just have to, they may be smarter than we are. The countries that have the best military discipline have also fought the most wars. But we should be very careful at this point. And I just hope the Democrats don't take political expediency over their responsibility.
Okay. Let me say a couple of things. One is, that's one of the reasons why there's some flexibility in what I propose and what Congressman Murtha proposed. You know, he talked about troops being over the horizon so that if they were needed, at least they were. See, the problem is, these kids are sitting ducks out there. They're up front when they ought to be in the background. It's not our country with 80%. I think I mentioned it, our own State Department polls, 80% of the people in the country view us as occupied. 45%. Now, these are our State Department polls. 45% of Iraqis believe that it is moral and justified to attack Americans. This is a country of 25 million people. How long are we going to have our kids in that position? Now, we have to help them, we have a moral obligation to help them set up a system of governance. But I think political leadership in Washington also has a moral obligation to make sure it's winnable, to make sure we can accomplish something. The President of the United States gets up and gives a speech and it's, you know, "This is what we want for victory, a full democratic government in Iraq that fully is engaged in the world and has a great economy." We do not have four decades to lose all these kids and all these kids with arms and legs. So what we have, we have a failed policy. I don't know if there's anyone that thinks our policy in Iraq has not been a failed policy. It just has. We didn't equip the troops, we didn't send them inadequately, we didn't do enough diplomacy, we didn't make every effort to, we didn't go in as a last resort. And I just think that we need to change directions there. And I heard what you said loud and clear, but this policy, I can't sit by for another decade and watch us continue with not changing the policy. Yes?
My name's Phil Levy, I'm from Maynard. What should be done about Joe Lieberman? Should he be excommunicated or simply ignored?
Simply ignored.
Congressman Mead, my name's Adam Sinessi and I'm from Waltham. So technically, I'm not one of your constituents.
How'd you get in here?
I used a fake ID. During the month of November, we saw a drastic decrease in the number of suicide bombings by the insurgents on our troops. I would say that's somewhat encouraging on our end. However, we do see a lot of, every time there's a bombing in Iraq, we see it in the news. Don't you feel, I agree that we need an exit strategy, however, at the same time, for to issue a timeline, I feel that would be playing right into the insurgent, the hands of the insurgents and our enemies. How do you feel about that?
Okay. First point, I don't think things are getting better in Iraq. I just don't think that. But here's where the fundamental disagreement and philosophy is. Those who's, we have an occupation. The occupation, we are occupying. I believe it's fueling the insurgency. There are anywhere from a couple of dozen to 100 different groups of insurgents out there. I mean, I don't think an occupying force in a country of 25 million people can suppress that kind of an insurgency. It grows faster than we could kill or eliminate people. So I'm not of the belief that if we say, "We don't intend to occupy, we're going to gradually, we're going to pull our troops out." I think we should have said it a year ago so that the Iraqis knew that, "Hey, we're in charge of security, we better get going." I don't believe that that helps, I don't believe that that, and Bowdoin's the enemy. And I don't, I think to tell them, "We're not going to be there permanently," basically says to them, "You're going to have your own country." Now, in the end, whether the Kurds and the Shiites and the Sunnis can all figure out a system of governance, I don't know the answer to that, maybe not. But what, how long is our obligation to stay the course? How long is our obligation? I just philosophically believe that when you have an insurgency that's fueled because of an occupation, an unpopular occupation, where almost half believe it's okay to attack American troops, that's an untenable situation to stay in. So that's why I don't think it helps or fuels the insurgency. Somebody said to me, "Well, if," in January, somebody said to me, "Well, if we tell them in January, we're going to leave, we're going to withdraw half of our troops, the insurgents will just wait until we withdraw half of our troops." Boy, wouldn't that be great if we had a whole year of no insurgency? That would make it easier to build the schools, to train the Iraqis, to do all the things that we need to do. The insurgency grows from within the country. There's only 5% to 10% who are people coming from outside the country. So that's why I philosophically believe telling them, "We don't intend to occupy," is a positive thing.
I'd love to hear your views on what kind of government we should leave behind and it seems that we're pressuring them into a very centralized form of government when there are three such distinct cultural, religious, and while there seems to be some nationalistic bonds, I'm not sure that's enough.
Yeah, that's a great question. Yeah, basically, the question is, what kind of governance do you see after we leave? What kind of government? It seems like, as though the United States is forcing them into, or pressuring them into a more centralized government when in fact, the Kurds really want their own area to the north and the Sunnis would like to have their own area and the Shiites would like to have their own area. They've drafted a constitution that has a mixture of that. In other words, one of the most difficult parts is, who's going to get the oil revenue in different parts of the countries? And the Sunnis took some from the Kurds and there's this debate going on and the constitution that they drafted has what I think is a mixture. I mentioned Tom Friedman because if you step back and say, "Well, what is in the interest of the world to happen in Iraq?" I think what's in the interest of the world is for some system of governance that has regional, maybe national. If they decided they want to have three separate countries, you know, they ought to have the ability to decide that as well. But there are problems if that happens as well. So I hope that when it's over, that they can find a way to respect the rights of the minorities in the country and find a way to share resources in a way that makes them a productive country where they, I mean, the education there was actually not that bad in terms of, when you compare it. And that's one of the reasons why people like Thomas Friedman have always said, "Iraq could be a model for the rest of that region." Now, the great thing about writing columns for the New York Times is you can write one thing one day and then the thing goes right down the drain and then he can write, "Well, they did it wrong, they should have done this, that, and that." And then, "My theory is correct in the long run." But what can we have at this point? I'm getting more pessimistic about what we're going to be left with in Iraq, which gets back to the question of, what is our moral responsibility vis-à-vis, you know, military involvement and how do we figure these things? These are difficult questions, but I would tell you that I think that they have to come up with a system of governance where they all can try to have their minority interests protected. But whether or not that can be accomplished, I'm just not as optimistic as I probably once was.
My name is Barbara Fine and I'm from Concord. And I wonder if you've seen the article and heard Seymour Hersh talking about the air war that is currently going on in Iraq that we don't hear about?
Yeah. Actually, I talked to Seymour. I don't know which article that you mentioned, but I talked to—
In the New Yorker.
Yeah, I talked to, oh, that one, yeah, I did see that one. I talked to him from time to time because he's got great sources, military sources, and I have been talking to him and trying to work with him to figure out a way to sort of bring it, I'm on the Armed Services Committee, I'd like to bring it up and figure out a way to sort of expose it. But yes, I've talked to him about it.
Yeah, the most, I don't know if there's going to be a question or a comment.
That's either one. I got to start to get comments so I can give more people an opportunity, so I have to stop commenting on everything.
First of all, thank you for having this. A dialogue is very important. This country hasn't had a dialogue, as we all know. And to use John Kerry's word, this is a nuanced situation, needs a lot of different ways of looking at it. We've already talked, already in this room, we've heard criticism about each other's comments and it is difficult for the Democrats to get together and come up with one unified word. But please give, get the rest of the country knowing that we've got a dialogue, we need to come up with as many creative ways as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Phil Villas, I live in Concord. And one of the most compelling reasons for having an explicit exit strategy is to clear the air on the Bush administration's dirty little secret. Before the war even started, the right-wing hawks who pressured for the war and wanted it so badly, saw it as a way of having permanent American military bases in the Middle East. And the administration has resolutely refused to answer the question whether that's still our goal. And of course, any Iraqi patriot and nationalist doesn't want American permanent bases in their land. And that's to me, one of the most important reasons for an explicit exit strategy, which explicitly would say, "We have no desire or intention of having permanent military bases."
I have offered amendments in the Armed Services Committee and have expressly asked Don Rumsfeld, "Are we planning on a permanent military base?" And he has said, "No." And I'd say, "Well, I'm in Iraq. When I'm in Iraq, I see a lot of concrete being poured and it sure looks to me as if we're planning permanent military bases." And I can tell you this, the Iraqi people see us pouring concrete and they think we intend a permanent military presence there. Phil, when you look at what's happened in Iraq, I think we all can agree, regardless of what our position is and when we should get out, if we should get out, whether we should have gone in, there is no way the United States of America should go in and remove a dictator from a country and with all of the problems and flaws and then set up a military base there. That's the worst thing that we could do, the worst message we could send. I can tell you that we are, that is one thing Democrats will be united about and some Republicans as well, to make sure that that doesn't happen. And we're going to continue to push on that, say, "No permanent military bases in Iraq." We have to do that. That would send the opposite message of what we need to send. And when he says, "No," I don't necessarily believe him.
Hey, I'm Ted Busek from Acton and I have two questions. The first is, given that we have an entirely volunteer army and that the large bulk, the majority of our military personnel in Iraq voted for Bush, do you really think that it's intellectually honest to frame the context of this meeting, for instance, bringing our troops home, as if you were doing them a favor by ending their mission? And then I also, the other question I have is, given that they're all adults, don't you think it's a little patronizing to keep referring to them as kids?
Well, you know, I say kids for people my age. It's just an expression that I use. But I don't care who they voted for. As far as I'm concerned, they're Americans. They are, I think, 19 years old to me as a kid. And when I go to Walter Reed Hospital and see these kids without arms and without legs, or when I talk to my niece's boyfriend who lost his left leg and the use of his right arm, and when I took him to a Patriots game after I saw him at Walter Reed and saw the difficulty he has where he can't even sit in a seat, and then he tells me that he wants to go back to Iraq and fight. And then I think about what his future is really going to be like and the psychological damage that this war has done. I think it's in our interest to get these kids home as soon as it's possible, or to get these young men home and women. And I'm going to tell you something, let me take it a step further because I'm on the Armed Services Committee and have been trying to get a policy, this is a really liberal thing to do, but I'm trying to get a policy where we give a complete physical and mental examination to troops when they come back. And I can't get them to do that because they say it's too difficult, it's too expensive. Veterans Administration is not prepared to deal with these young men when they come home because we don't have a system. And do we learn anything in Vietnam? In Vietnam— In Vietnam, there are a number of people who, guys who came back, who, whose families, you know, they got divorced, they had problems in their families, drug addiction, all kinds of problems, because we didn't diagnose post-traumatic stress disorder. Well, now we have it diagnosed, we just, we're just not going to deal with them. So, yeah, I think there is an interest in getting them home as soon as we can. And, you know, some people say to me, some people say, well, they say they're doing their job. There are a lot of good things being done in Iraq. I've talked to a lot of soldiers and Marines that every day are doing something positive, okay? But it's up to the political leadership in this country to make the decisions. I've talked to enough military leaders who disagree with civilian leadership at the Pentagon, and think that this is not a winnable situation, that you can't have a country of this many people. So I guess that's my perspective, but maybe I shouldn't use kids. I'll think about that, you might be right.
My name's Leanne Kay, I live here in Concord. Earlier in this town meeting, Congressman, you mentioned that we need to have a dialogue. And yet, I was a little concerned that you agreed that we should blow off Senator Lieberman.
To what?
Senator Lieberman.
No, I didn't say blow him off.
Yeah, yeah, you did. Ignore him.
It was an A or B answer, and I took B.
Okay, ignore him. And I know that Democrats are not united in how to approach the Iraqi war at this point. But Senator Lieberman has been to Iraq on four occasions, his viewpoints are much different from yours, and I think that if we're going to have a national dialogue, we cannot ignore what other senators have concluded, that this should be, their views need to be part of this discussion as well. I'd like to point out that, in my opinion, you cannot nation-build in two and a half years. We didn't do it after World War II, it took five to 10 years. There's no reason to believe that it might be a similar situation in Iraq. And then when you talk about misinformation and intelligence was faulty, it's my understanding a lot of that intelligence was gathered during the Clinton administration. And if Saddam Hussein is, if someone was lying, it was Saddam Hussein who, excuse me, gave the middle finger to the UN. So I think that there's, we can debate, I don't want to go into that kind of debate, but we do have 2,000 dead, war dead, in Iraq, and that's sad. Anytime we lose an American patriot, it is sad. But I'd like to just leave you with the words of John F. Kennedy, who I think is a great American. He said, "That America will pay any price, bear any burden, meet any hardship, support any friend, oppose any foe, to assure the survival and the success of liberty." And I believe that people all over the world want liberty. They do not want to be under the hand of the Taliban or Al Qaeda, they don't want to be under the hand, the thumb, excuse me, the heel of tyrants. And I believe that we are making progress in that country. Thank you.
Okay. Let me just quickly comment. It was an A or B sort of thing, and I took B, but I didn't, I talked to Senator Lieberman a lot, and there are a lot of different views. But let me just make this point. It may well be that Saddam Hussein had to go, but I think the United States needs to tell the truth about why we're doing it. Because you can't have any moral standing in the world if you manipulate intelligence or say one thing when in fact you're doing it for another reason. So I've been, I've been to Iraq, and I have seen the mass graves. I would point out that at a time when Saddam Hussein was chemically killing Kurds, the United States government was supporting him for a period of that time. So I think, but I am open to other views. I mean, obviously Hillary Clinton has another view, so.
Hi, I'm Frances Huxley, from whom you hear more than you would like, I suppose.
Oh, I always like to hear.
I live in Concord. I had two questions, but I will limit it to one. And I've written it out. There is now plenty of evidence that Bush and his henchmen lied knowingly to start this war, that they wanted to start this war long before 9/11. There seem to be plenty of people who would testify to this, and plenty of evidence that Bush and co. knowingly lied to Congress and to the people about weapons of mass destruction, Iraqis' ties to 9/11, and to Al Qaeda, and many other things. According to the Constitution, such lies to get us into war would qualify as a high crime or misdemeanor. There does not seem to be anything in the Constitution which states that only the majority party in the House can issue articles of impeachment. So my question is, how much longer must we tolerate this president and all the harm he has done here and abroad before you and others in the House will issue articles of impeachment?
I will be back to Washington on Monday. It's, clearly, it's more difficult to do when you can't call a hearing, when you can't bring people in under oath, because literally, you don't have the ability to have a hearing. But we'll see how this develops. I think there's been a lot of progress made over the last several months in terms of the American people and more members of Congress willing to speak out. I'm part of the Out of Iraq Caucus, and I'll tell you what, I will, when I bring up these town meetings that I've had, I will bring that question up, and we will have a discussion about it. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alice Daley, I'm from Concord, and I want to applaud you for your idea of having town meetings, and what better place in Massachusetts to start as a model for the country. I do want to make a comment on the title change that's taking place. Two weeks ago, if you said, get out of Iraq, people would accuse you of being naive, and now even the administration's using words, of course, to the extent that you can trust their words. But I see two real dangers. One, a lady brought up about the increasing bombing that can go on, and the fact that if we give the power for choosing targets to the Iraqis, it can actually increase the amount of retribution that goes on between the Shiites and the Sunnis. And it's really important to not up the aircraft bombing, which would kill more citizens. As the Reverend said, there was 40,000, some say 27,000, some say 100,000, from the Johns Hopkins report. And the other thing is, yesterday was the anniversary of the four women, the three nuns, and the labor worker who were killed in El Salvador. And both Rumsfeld and Cheney have spoken highly of what we've done in El Salvador, and I think there's a real danger, where when we had those death squads that we were supporting, and there's a real danger that we use the CIA and other forces to cause that kind of death.
Thanks.
Al Armenti, Concord. I'm a World War II veteran, I'm a member of the Veterans for Peace. And we have taken, this is a national organization, having chapters in every state, virtually. And we have taken the stand that we want our troops out of there as quickly as possible. So I commend you for the stand that you're now taking on trying to get out. The question of phase withdrawal is a real problem for us. As someone who's been in the war, if I were asked to be part of the phases to leave, I would want to be in the first one. But there is an image that's been promoted about the war in Iraq, that it's like World War II, that there's an enemy on the other side, there are front lines, that we're fighting for liberty, for patriotism. This is hogwash, absolute hogwash. You've alluded to the fact that we're fighting an insurgency. The insurgency is not an organized military force that we're opposed to. It's more like fighting a war on the drugs, of trying to get out pockets. The bombing just yesterday had killed 10 Marines. That wasn't, that wasn't a fortified unit behind a trench or something like that. They just showed up and blew up our men. And we now have, what is it, something like 21, 1,200 dead? They're dying at the rate of two or three a day. Veterans for Peace is absolutely opposed to this war. We want to stop it. We're going to end up with many more dead, and we're going to have, as you pointed out, soldiers without arms and legs and limbs in a veterans' hospital situation that can't deal with, most of them. They've already set limits to prevent veterans from entering the hospital. We have a tendency in this country to fight the wars, to glorify it, and then forget the troops that come back. We should not be doing that, and we would be definitely opposed to it.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you. Michael Bryan from Lincoln. And thank you, Mr. Mann, for your initiative and your leadership on this question. Appreciate that. I'd like to suggest, though, for the sake of the larger conversation, this intelligent discussion that our country has not yet had, that what we want to focus on is conflict resolution. And since World War I, a lot of people have been studying this issue. We teach courses on it in our business schools, we have all sorts of videos directed at people in organizational development, and how one can peacefully work through some very difficult issues to come up with a win-win solution. And I think that what we've been lacking in this country is any kind of vision or sense of leadership, that this is what we ought to be doing. We should take our understanding, we should take what we've learned over the last decades and apply it to this situation in Iraq. And at the highest levels of both the Democratic and the Republican parties, we've not had anyone that I could hear call for this, except for perhaps Kucinich. This is, we should be approaching this problem in a professional kind of way. And the problem that is our failed policy is not just the war in Iraq, it's the war on terrorism. It's the decision that was made right after 9/11 to not try to resolve this conflict or even understand it, but to kill the people that we're in disagreement with. You know, once we decided to go to war, we have chosen to escalate and prolong and deepen and intensify the conflict. And what we've know, I think, about conflict is that what goes, or any kind of human behavior, is that what goes around comes around. The more we go around the world, killing off the people that we don't like or who have an issue with us, the more they're going to come back here to kill us, and that's precisely what they're planning. This administration doesn't seem to understand what kind of war we're fighting. They're still fighting the old-fashioned World War II, or Korean-type war. And the kind of war that they're getting us into now is the kind that they have no realistic defense against. There is no one, or no way, we can stop terrorists from coming over here and killing not just our young boys and our young women, but any group of Americans. And that's precisely what they're talking about doing, and they're just justifying this on the basis of the numbers of people that we have been killing. So for the sake of an intelligent conversation, let's shift the focus to looking for peaceful ways of conflict resolution and win-win solutions, not win-lose solutions.
And that's one of the, that's one of the ideas behind this initiative.
Congressman, my name's Donald Bulett from Lowell. I spent February through October in Campolusia last year. I just want to respond to his comments.
Can you put the mic up just a little closer?
Respond to my fellow veterans' comments and the reverend's comments. Part of those 2,200 people that have died, some of them are my friends, and certainly, would I like to see them home tomorrow, absolutely. But if it meant that I had to pack my bags tonight and go over to have them come home, I would do it. The insurgents I was seeing while I was over there were, to me, it seemed like they were coming from outside the country, Syrians, Iranians, Bangladeshi, Lebanese, Palestinian. I think it's in our own interest of national defense to promote democracy in this region. And I think as our moral responsibility, we owe it to the Iraqi people to give them the opportunity to at least stand on their own two feet, to stand up enough Iraqi civil defense forces that they can defend their own interests and protect their own government. And just briefly to comment on what you said about mandatory health and mental evaluations for when they come home. Speaking as someone who was a reservist and been on the other side of the coin, when you come home, I come back to, say, Camp Pendleton, that's where I redeployed to, and I'm obviously from Lowell. They say, is there anything wrong with you? Nope, absolutely not. I just want to get home as quick as I can. I think some of that, some of that evaluation that, it needs to be transferred to the VA system so that these Marines, these soldiers coming home can do it at home. Because when you get home, there's that three or four weeks of just pure elation where you say, I'm happy to be alive, I'm going to go out in San Diego and drink the town dry. And you get home, and you don't start to see some of those problems till you look around to some of your friends and you say, hey, are you having nightmares? And, but there's a stigma between saying, hey, I went to the VA because I'm not feeling right. And so some of the, just the way the system works needs to be tweaked so that these Marines, these soldiers, don't really have a choice about saying, hey, you need to go see these healthcare providers, and at least talk to them, and they can determine how you feel. Because as it stands now, it's up to you to just say, hey, I'm not feeling good. And at 19, 20, 21, you're invincible, and you don't ever want to admit that there's something wrong with me. And you don't see it until, you know, until you look around and you see all your friends, and nobody wants to say, hey, something's not right here. So that's something that needs to be tweaked with the healthcare system. Right?
First of all, thank you for your service, and I want to tell you something. I visit, I visit the troops wherever they are around the world, and I've been to Kosovo, to Afghanistan, and I'm amazed at the high quality and the caliber and the courage of the people that we, that we have in our armed forces. And I'm sincere when I tell you, thank you so much for what you do. You have particularly laid out what every analysis study that I have read as a member of the Armed Services Committee says. You get somebody that comes home, did you, you didn't say kid, did you? But what, exactly what you described is absolutely what happens in so many instances. Why should it be up to somebody? Everyone's, they want to get home, they want to see their family, they want to see their friends, they want to get out. And we need to have a system that ensures, and you're right, it's going to be in the VA system. But there are some people who, when, after they're deployed, they come back, they don't have a VA clinic near where their house is, but they just want to get home. There are all kinds of problems with this, but we have to deal with it. I gave an award to a Marine in Washington, the Marine of the Year Award, Lawrence, Massachusetts. He, I then saw him later on, I had a lot of contact with him, I saw him later on, and he was working at the Toys for Tots program. And one night about 2:00 in the morning, there's a bar near where his house is, on top of his family's business, and his family's getting woken up, and he's got a gun, he's shooting the gun out the window. Now, this is a guy that had the responsibility in Iraq of taking people after they're killed and putting them into body bags, and literally had done this, and one of the reasons why he was Marine of the Year is he had done this in 58 different circumstances within a specific period of time. And it means so much to the families and to everyone, the work that he does. But how in the world do we have this guy come back and not give him a proper evaluation? This guy did great service, and obviously, we did not do enough as a country to make sure that he's okay when he gets back. So we're going to, unfortunately, folks, we're going to have thousands of people in this situation, thousands of them. Because, well, you've been in the theater, you know what it's like. And we had better find a way, no matter what our position is on this, we got to find a way to deal with all of these brave people coming home.
Sergeant Carden is a perfect example of what, Sergeant Carden is a perfect example of what, of what I was talking about.
Oh, yeah.
Here's a tough guy, went through a tough situation, and even to his closest friends, I'm one of his closest— I'm one of his closest friends, and he is reluctant to admit that some of the problems he was having with readjusting to civilian life.
I didn't even, I didn't know that, but I know him pretty well, too, and I know what he did in Iraq, and I know what he did for Iraqis who were killed. And it's...
Part of this, for me, is that shame. And that has to do with our country, as far as I can tell, formally sponsoring torture of prisoners. It is absolutely beyond me how we could know that that's happening, have it continue to happen, have frontline soldiers being punished, having generals and other leaders in the country being totally exonerated from any blame or responsibility. I'm ashamed of it. I'm angry about the war. I am ashamed of that behavior.
Phil and Al and a group of people were in to see me recently, and we're going to have a forum, I think it's in your materials, a forum on torture policy at Suffolk University next Monday. John Conyers, Congressman from Michigan, is coming up, and we're going to get at the heart of that issue. But thank you for your comments.
I want to start by saying thank you to you, Congressman Mann, for the strong stance you have taken on this torture issue, and I think over a long period of time. So I think we're very glad to have you as our congressperson.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I should have called on you earlier.
But wait. No, no, there's another issue that I want to bring up in terms of care of our veterans. A lot of people aren't aware of the fact, they've heard that, know something about the use of depleted uranium weapons in the Gulf War, but there hasn't been much talk about it recently. And people are not aware that half as much depleted uranium has been used in munitions in this war as well. That's 150 metric tons that have been used in this war and 300 in the Gulf War. And there is legislation which you signed previously, in previous iterations, sponsored by Jim McDermott, that calls for studies of the health effects that can come from this depleted uranium. And it also calls for cleanup of the sites here in the United States where depleted uranium was used, such as Nuclear Metals StarMet in Concord, Massachusetts, which you helped us get Superfund status for so that it could be cleaned up. But there are other sites in this country that aren't as fortunate and where this needs to happen. But I think that the first step in terms of being able to treat people who feel that they have been affected by depleted uranium, the dust inhalation of the dust, should come through this study that's been proposed by Congressman McDermott of the state of Washington and is supported by several of our Massachusetts congressmen. So I would ask you, will you support that legislation?
Yeah, if I'm not on the legislation this year, I should be, but I'll get on.
Wonderful.
But more important than that, I think that what I could do is, at the next Armed Services hearing where we get people from the Pentagon there to ask them about, I thought I was on the bill this year, too, so I'll make sure, we can make sure we get on that bill.
Hi, my name is Carol Marcaci, and I live in Acton. And before I get to the question, I would just like to tell you that I think that you are so articulate and so compassionate, not only about your buddies in the service, but about the Iraqi people. And I just, you know, it brought tears to my eyes to hear you speak about how much you care that they have the country that they want and deserve. And I just feel like that doesn't at all, this comment doesn't speak to whether it's right or wrong for us to be there or to have started or whatever, it's just that I really appreciate your valor and your compassion, and thank you. And please stick around here so that you can speak out at other meetings and maybe form a coalition to get better care for vets who come over and who, of course, would not dare to speak about what could be bothering them or wrong with them. But we owe it to you to do something more. Anyway, I'm sorry.
That was very good.
Okay. And my question for you is that, just as an ordinary citizen, ever since this war started, I have been incredibly frustrated because I just never trusted the president's ability to carry on a war like this, you know, President Bush. And I just wonder, just as an ordinary citizen, sometimes I get so frustrated that I think that there really isn't much I can do anymore, that this thing sort of has a life of its own, and the political side of it has a huge life of its own. And I know that the tides seem to be changing a little bit, but of course, not fast enough for me. I just want you to tell me, what can we do as ordinary citizens, as Democrats, to really just help you to have the support you need to end this war in a way that saves lives the most? What can we do?
I think to speak out, to write letters to the editor, to, you know, use the internet, to communicate with people, to follow the issues, to understand the different sides of the issue, and continue to speak out, utilize technology to do that. There is something happening in the country. When Jack Murtha, who has more credibility when it comes to military issues, you know, when he talks, people listen. And something's moving to get people like Jack Murtha to this point. There are Republicans who I talked to privately who absolutely believe that we need to sort of change directions in terms of our policy. You know, we've got to get the UN more involved in this. We never, ever did really get them involved. So just keep speaking out.
Congressman, my name is Bill Haza, I've been a resident of Concord for approximately 30 years. It alarmed me that we had not, as a town, done anything for the troops at Hanscom. Four years ago, I went to a service board and was told, yes, if you could get clubs in this area to back us, we'd start a program. What I found then were calls at home, possibly from some of your supporters, who told me that it was politically incorrect to start programs such as serving the troops at Thanksgiving and Christmas at Hanscom, helping families of troops, getting gifts that would be collected here to go to the front lines. And in fact, up till this point, there's been almost no town support for this activity, which is now eight or 10 different programs. I've talked to the troops, serving them in the barracks at Hanscom. I've talked to senior officers who have been in the halls of the White House while Bill Clinton was there, and Mr. Clinton did not speak to them. I've heard the arguments of those who say that there are Arabs who look upon this country as being a paper tiger because we would not take action after what happened to our Middle Eastern embassies and to the USS Cole, that we had to have someone who would take a stand. I've heard you and others suggest that Mr. Lieberman is not only a statesman, a person who should be brought in as Vice President of the United States, but also a deeply religious man. And in reading what Mr. Lieberman stated in the Wall Street Journal this past week, I've been impressed by the difference as to what you've seen and what he's seen. He's seeing about 10,000 men, who are, many of them from outside, against, I suspect that the number was many more times that, cannot remember that exact number, but he's speaking about they're getting into a triangle where they are more and more ineffective. And from the standpoint of what are we doing for the Iraqis? It's my understanding that there is a tremendous amount of infrastructure that is being built, that their lives are much better presently than they were under Saddam. And I'm wondering, why is it that there is such a difference between what you're voicing now and what he voiced in the Journal?
Couple of points. One is, I don't know what you mean in terms of supporting the troops, but if there's someone at Hanscom that won't be part of an effort, I'd...
I can answer that, sir.
I'd be glad to call someone, whatever I could do.
I've sent invitations to you before, and they've been ignored.
To me?
Yes.
I visit with the troops all over the country and all over the world.
I'm not sure when the last time was at Hanscom, but I'm talking about this.
I've been at Hanscom probably, in our efforts to save Hanscom, I was up there all the time, and we were successful at it. I was up there with Senator Kennedy a number of times. But, so I don't know what the first part of it was, but if there's anything I can do to help with that, that would be great. But to the other issue, I have a different view of it, I guess, than Senator Lieberman does. And it's, you know, I like Senator Lieberman, but I think that our policy, I don't think the average Iraqi believes that their condition is better, it's because the unemployment rate is still high, it's been difficult to keep the infrastructure, the lack of electricity in different parts of the country. There are a lot of positive, I think I said earlier, there are a lot of positive things that are happening in different parts of the country. The difficulty is in the Sunni triangle. The difficulty is also in the fact that you have, from a minimum of a couple of dozen to up to possibly 100 different groups, sometimes they work together, sometimes they don't. Sometimes people join the insurgency. I just have a different view, and I respect every perspective on this, and that's one of the reasons why I'm doing a town meeting, to get different perspectives on it. I just think the policy hasn't worked very well, but that's not to say, I can name dozens of different projects that I've seen that are going well. In those areas where it's secure and there's some level of security, then you can make infrastructure and economic development projects work. In those areas where there are more bombings, I think we've made a lot of mistakes in terms of getting the Iraqis the type of training that they needed from the beginning. And I don't think it was until General David Petraeus took over training that we really got it going. We were training people for three weeks and putting them out on the streets, and when they get attacked, they'd run away. And then we started training them five weeks, and when they get a paycheck, the Iraqis would walk home to give the paychecks to their families. The problem is it takes them two weeks in some instances to walk home, we were losing all the troops. So there had been a lot of mistakes made. And I think in a country like this, when there are mistakes made, A, the first step is to acknowledge mistakes, and secondly, is to try to correct them. They don't even admit that we sent the troops in without cover or vests. I mean, I don't know. You've got to go over...
I want to shift the focus a little bit. I am a member of Veterans for Peace, but those who've been through military conflict pretty much conclude a common theme, that is, war is hell. I'm a member of the General Smedley Butler Brigade of Veterans for Peace. Smedley Butler said, "War is a racket, not for those who are fighting it, but for those who are profiting from it." Great profits made from wars by munitions makers, tank makers, airplane makers, and so forth. And after World War II, tremendously horrible war in many respects, one that probably was necessary to fight, the leaders of the victorious Allied Powers decided they wanted to end the scourge of war. There've been a hell of a lot of them since then. And the vehicle they established to try to end the scourge of war was the United Nations. The United States took the lead in establishing the United Nations. But since we took the lead in establishing the United Nations, my first key reference on this is the John Birch Society, seeds were sown to undermine the United Nations, to undermine US support for the United Nations. Basically, if you buy into the United Nations, you're supporting peace, you're supporting peaceful means of resolving disputes. However, there are interests in this country that decided they did not want to surrender, quote, "their national sovereignty" to some supranational body. And it seems to me that the best legacy of the United States is to return to establish the United Nations what the founders intended to be, and use this vehicle, maximize the use of this vehicle, and in fact, surrender our sovereignty, in fact, relinquish any claims we have of Iraqi oil, among other things, and put the United Nations back to work. And this would be the best legacy of the United States going forward, to help make the UN the vehicle that it was intended to be. The UN could be no better than the nations, participant nations, make it. And I would like to see that happen, like to see the Congress of the United States take that kind of lead and use that vehicle in helping to end the Iraqi war and all future wars.
We better update our dues then. We better pay our dues then.
Yvonne Holgerson, Concord, I have two things. First, I want to go back to the young men and women, or kids as we call them, because one evening I was watching TV, and I don't remember what the program was, but they were showing the Walter Reed Hospital and the young men and women there, and I can't get that picture out of my mind, that's been several months ago. They showed the amputees and the young men and women with the faces still trying to hold it together and being proud to serve their country and all. But I think we have a responsibility to them. I want to know what the magic number is. Do you know what I mean by the magic number? What will it take to get, what number of young men and women being killed? Will it be, it's not 2,000, we know that, is it 2,500? Is it 5,000? Or is it going to involve the number killed together? 10 Marines at once, that doesn't bother anybody? 20, 100? If they bomb 500, will that do it? What will it take to get the Congress, forget about Bush, because he's never going to admit that he made a mistake or so, we can't wait for that. What is it going to take to get the Congress, your constituents, angry enough, as angry as the Republicans were, the Democrats I'm talking about in particular, to become as angry as the Republicans were when Clinton went through his, whatever it was you want to call it, that he went through? That was horrible, that was disgusting, da-da-da-da-da, but no one was killed, no one was maimed. They're walking around now, taking care of business. It's nothing. These young people need help. We should not force them to be where they are not wanted, where they don't need to be, and we should do something about it. And I think the Democrats in Congress are just sitting with their tail between their legs, saying, "Well, watching the Republicans suffer from all the bad publicity, that's not cutting it." They have a responsibility to run with it the way the Republicans ran with it when Clinton got into his mess, and the Democrats were there in Congress. You people are, you're representing us. Go back and tell them, they're representing us. Get off their duffs, run with it, leak it to the press, whatever they have to do to let them know it's not right. Do something for these young people. I can't get that picture out of my mind. And for what? I keep asking myself, are we being attacked? Is it something our friend, for what? And more, how many more thousands have to die?
Yeah. Well, you said it well. One of the things they probably need to get more attention is everybody uses a number of deaths, but if you consider 15,700 injuries, half of them very, very serious injuries, what you're talking about, and I go to Walter Reed, and I think that if more people saw what was going on at Walter Reed, and by the way, I've seen soldiers and Marines at Walter Reed get their combat pay cut as soon as they get walked through the door. I've seen soldiers, we were collecting, that's why when you talk about collecting things, we were collecting, you know, things like mouthwash and underwear and things like that, they weren't providing them there. We don't even provide for them. But I hope that town meetings like this and getting them out to other members, frankly, there have been some members of Congress who, let's say, voted against the resolution and figure out it's somebody else's problem. You know, I didn't vote for the resolution, so that's the way it goes. But I agree with you. I think that we have to propose substantive... I think that we have to propose substantive alternatives to the present policy.
My name is Bruce McDonald, I'm from Billerica, and I'm also a member of Veterans for Peace. For the past two years, our local chapter has been trying to urge The Globe to publish the US casualty figures on the front page once a week like they did during the Vietnam War. And we've written them, Al Armenti, who spoke earlier, has been leading that charge, and basically, they've snubbed us. The reason that they gave to Al at a meeting he had with him in January was that they don't want to make it look like they have an agenda. And so, I think the media coverage has left a lot to be desired generally, but I think it's shameful that they're refusing to publish the casualties on the front page, as they did during the Vietnam War. Every Friday during the Vietnam War, smack on the front page, often in a box, with the weekly casualty total, and also usually the casualty total from the beginning of the war to date. And my question to you is, would you support our effort to urge The Globe to publish the casualty figures once a week on the front page? And do you agree that they should do?
Sure, I agree, and I would, not that they'll listen to me, but I would agree. And I do think, you know what's very powerful? ABC's This Week, every week.
Absolutely.
And when it comes, I watch it every week, and when it comes on, I try to think about how many deaths I heard of during the week, and in my own mind, I guess, and then it comes on and the names come on. And I do think that that's really important and powerful, and, you know, I'd be glad to do a letter to them too, and incite ABC. People know what I'm talking about on ABC's This Week? At the end of the, This Week with George Stephanopoulos it is now, but at the end of the program, they give you all the names of people...
Rita Segal in Concord, I just wondered, is there any constructive way in which the UN could be involved in a, in the successful or effective separation from Iraq, and also in the reconstruction? It seemed that that, you know, their role and we, of course Ambassador Bolton being there, it's going to be tough.
I'll say. The lesson here is the UN should have been involved from the beginning. And, you know, part of the reason for the resolution in the beginning was that the administration was saying that they weren't going to go to the UN, that they weren't going to let the inspectors go back in because it wouldn't work. And members of Congress said, "Well, let's work something out." So then they said, "Okay, we'll go back, you know, we'll agree to put the inspectors back as part of the resolution. We'll agree to go to the UN Security Council resolution." And I met twice in private meetings with Colin Powell, where he specifically said the intent of this resolution was so that we can use it as leverage, you know, to get the Russians on board and to get the French on board. How are those discussions going, Mr. Secretary? "Well, I think we have a real shot here to get the..." Now, as you look at history, I just don't believe that they ever thought it was important enough to get the US Security Council on board, or to get the UN on board. Now, the reason why that was a mistake is not that we couldn't go in and remove Saddam on our own, it's that we suffered the consequences of going it alone, of basically thumbing our nose at the world. And now the problem is, after thumbing our nose at the world, we want to go back to them and say, "Hey, we've got a real mess on our hands." And we really, we need troops, we need money, we need you to participate, we've got to train these troops, and we need help, and we're now happy to welcome you aboard. But unfortunately, that's not the way diplomacy works, it's not the way countries deal with one another. I don't know if I mentioned, I'm doing a lot of these town meetings, I forget whether I mentioned certain things, but in Kosovo and Bosnia, we were 17%, 18% of the operation. It was a sheer expense. In Afghanistan, we went into Afghanistan, we were paying 50% of the operation because of the other countries that were working. Iraq has been from the beginning, 92% to 93% of all the operations. And the idea of going it alone, the problem with that is that it makes it really difficult to get other countries willing to step up to the plate after we basically have told them we don't need them. And therein is, I think, the greatest disaster of this whole thing, is that, you know, even when the President's having some difficulties, his favorable ratings are way, way down, and what Presidents do in a second term when they're becoming unpopular, is they travel to other countries. It's tough to find a country where this guy can go to. And it's specifically because of that. And I got to tell you something, it's Mongolia. I was going to bring up Mongolia, they, you know, they have 105 troops over the earth, so he goes to Mongolia. But my point is, we've talked a lot about Al Qaeda and terrorism, and you cannot win in terms of Al Qaeda if you don't have the cooperation of other countries. It's about intelligence, it's about knowing what's going on, and I don't blame anyone politically for 9/11, I really don't. But I remember talking to Peg Oganowski, whose husband was a pilot of American Flight 11. And it was three days after 9/11, and she's got three daughters, and she said, "You know, Marty, I'm really not bitter, I'm going to pull my life together, but I am bitter about one thing. Our intelligence community failed us, we should have known. They trained my husband to do the opposite of what he should do if terrorists come on the plane." And I believe we knew about it, I believe we should have known about it. And because of the 9/11 Commission, which by the way is the only independent inquiry of anything in Washington, the administration was against it, but the families forced it, it then became clear that in FBI files, you know, there were people who suspected terrorists who were learning how to fly, totally failed. The French, after 9/11, provided more help in terms of getting us to understand Al Qaeda than most countries in the world initially. So if we're going to really look at terrorism honestly and say, "Okay, what do we do about Al Qaeda?" In addition to all of the ideas that I've heard today, one of them is that we need to cooperate with other countries, and we need to work together with other countries. And we didn't do that here. That's the biggest mistake, whether you're a Democrat or a Republican. I visited the Middle East recently, it was in Egypt, President Mubarak there, and Egypt can help us solve some of the problems between the Israelis and the Palestinians by trying to help with a safe passage where the Gaza Strip. And he said, "You know, it's not that you guys got rid of Saddam, we didn't like Saddam, it's the way you did it." That's the thing, it's the way you did it. Now, maybe, there are people that could have made an argument that because Saddam, and Joe Lieberman would make this argument, because Saddam was paying Palestinian families to come in and, who were going to Israel and letting off bombs in buses, and he would pay them and take care of them, and there were, you know, hundreds of thousands of people that were killed, does that, is that a reason to go in to Iraq against Saddam? Well, I don't know, we could have had a national debate about it, and then people could have voted on that basis whether or not that was, but that's not what we did. We said under the resolution, we were going in to disarm Saddam Hussein of weapons of mass destruction. That was the reason we went in. I mean, there's no way you can justify that. There's just no way that you can. But anyway, I didn't mean to go on so long, go ahead. We have to get them all involved.
Marty, my name's Eric Van Loon, I'm a former chair of the Democratic Town Committee here in Concord, and I join in the thanks for you coming here and talking with us today and giving us a chance to talk. It seems to me, though, it's also impossible not to be painfully aware that we live in a community, and in a congressional district, and in a state where this, the insanity of our policy is widely recognized. And that in this democracy of ours, so long as we've got a Republican president and he has a majority of the Congress behind him, for better, for worse, out of party loyalty or whatever, we don't have a way to turn this around. And so, my question is about the opportunity that we have 11 months from now, when there will be a national referendum, what kinds of things you are thinking about and doing with your friends like Bob Clement in Tennessee and all those other Republican districts across the country where there could be a change to the Democratic side? And what you're thinking is about what we also can do in a more focused, directive way to try to at least change the Congress back, so that in the same way that the Republicans foiled most of Clinton's priorities for a bunch of years, we can be a government of the people that'll start to put the brakes on this and turn things around?
Well, we had an event actually in Boston for a Democratic, former Democratic Congressman, Nick Lamson from Texas, who's running against a guy named Delay. Part of the problem with the midterm elections in this country is that we have a redistricting process in America, where it's sort of a protect the incumbents. I think we should have more Democratic seats in California, in Illinois, and in a number of states. But what happens during redistricting, incumbents make their districts safer and safer and safer, so that when it comes time to have an election, there are only 30 seats, maybe 40 seats are actually in play. Therein lies the challenge, because districts become either very, very Democratic or very, very Republican. And so that's the challenge in the midterm elections. But frankly, there is a lot of movement right now in the country, and I think we're going to find, it's going to be an interesting election, let me put it that way.
Mara Flynn from Maynard, Mass, thank you Congressman Maynard for having these meetings. I'd like to turn back to the media for a moment, and first of all, you mentioned George Stephanopoulos's show, and it brought up something that I've been wondering about for a while, I've been watching him for a long time. At the end of his show, he always will say, he would, he used to say, say 10 soldiers in Iraq this week, the Pentagon has released the names of six. Now, he doesn't say how many soldiers died, he only says, "The Pentagon has released these names of the soldiers."
I thought he said the number.
Not anymore, it's been about a year now since he's done that, and I wonder why. So I believe that's been stifled. The other thing is that...
I'm not sure that, you know, we should watch that, I mean, we should. Watch what you want, but I'll pay attention to that next time.
Yeah, just notice it. But anyway, the other question I have, I'm very concerned about where our money is going, and I was wondering if you have any comment about this latest revelation that the United States has been paying soldiers to write articles for the Iraqi press?
Yeah, $5 million, a PR company.
And was there any outcome to that the other day in the Senate?
Yeah. Matt, make sure, there were a lot of open, CJ. Yeah, I do have a comment. I don't think that you can, not that we have the perfect press here in the United States, but I don't think that you can talk about an independent press and then have this policy of basically paying, having people write articles and paying people to put these articles in under somebody else's name. Now, everyone was scurrying around initially, saying, "We don't know anything about this." I think it's a bad, I think the United States is better off. We need to get a message out there, but what kind of message are we going to get out there if we're making it up? I mean, it doesn't...
We're making it up here at home, too, that's the other problem.
Yeah, but that's why I'm careful to make sure, you know, remember Judith Miller wrote a lot of front-page stories about weapons of mass destruction.
Lies.
And now I think, and now, you know, we know that, well, we know what we know, not to mention, not to mention, how does a guy, how does a guy that is one of the leading journalists in the country not tell any of his editors that somebody at the White House told them the information where there's a, everyone's writing about it, he's commenting about it, and he knows somebody in the administration who told him before the time period in the indictment? I don't know, but that's my opinion on it.
But anyway, the bottom line is that that's a bit of money that we've wasted now in Iraq, too. But what about all the other money that's been lost and stolen that's not been accounted for? Is the Congress going to do anything to press for this money that's missing?
There needs to be an accounting, particularly in the economic development account, where there are billions of dollars, that it just isn't clear at this point what has happened to the, 8 billion, did someone say? We need to have an accounting of it, and that hasn't happened yet. If you look in your packet, I can, I've shown what I've been trying to do to get attention, but I sense a lot of frustration. Part of the problem, as I mentioned earlier, is it's really difficult to have a hearing when you can't call a hearing. It's difficult to, I mean, we don't win votes in committee, we don't win any votes in committee, we lose every vote. I mean, that literally is what, which is why the question relative to where we go from here is important.
Peter DeFerry from Cambridge.
Yeah, Peter.
Congressman, I think you honestly avoided answering the soldier's first question. What I've heard most often from our military leaders on the ground in Iraq is that the insurgency is so strong because we've never had enough troops there. We take over an area, we leave, we don't have enough troops to leave behind, and the insurgents come back in. Here's a man who said he's more than willing to go back over if it means bringing our troops home safely. Why are we not talking about sending more troops, sending the generals the troops that they've always requested, and taking responsibility for what we have already done to the Iraqis and to their country?
Well, that's a good question. Many people called for more troops in the beginning. Rumsfeld said, "We don't need more troops." Remember, they said, General Shinseki said, "We can't secure Iraq after Saddam falls unless we have a few hundred thousand troops." They fired him and sent him out. What I saw was a window of opportunity, where if we could have kept some sense of security in the early going, in the early going, then it would have been worth it. So more troops in the beginning would have been worth it. This is what I think, though. I think the window is gone. Let me repeat with our own State Department polls tell us, and by the way, all the generals that come before my committee, I've asked every one of them whether they want more troops, they all say no. Now, I don't know what the deal is, but they all say no. Here's what I think from a policy perspective where the problem is. And by the way, it's a great question, and I don't think, I've talked to John McCain for a long period of time, John McCain is still calling for more troops, he still says, "Let's get more troops in." Now, if we could get a more, you know, if we could get the UN, if we could get NATO and get more people, you know, maybe you'd be talking about something, because that wouldn't negatively impact the view of us as an occupier. The reason I think we can't just send more troops in at this point is because of the fact that 80% of the Iraqis view us as occupiers. And I gave the statistic, our own State Department polls, that 45% of a country of 25 million thinks it's morally okay to attack Americans. I don't want to put more troops in that situation. I think about that fact, 45% of Iraqis think it's okay to attack American troops. We missed an opportunity there, and those are our State Department polls. I look at that and I read that and I say, "Well, how are we going to succeed here?" There are parts of the country where a lot of positive things are happening. In the north, there are water projects, in the south where Saddam actually interrupted the natural flow of the Tigris and Euphrates, did terrible things. But I don't know how we can, not to mention, our military's really stretched things, they're reservists on second and third and fourth deployments, and these guys will go five, six, they'll do whatever we ask them to, but I'm worried about that. That's the answer I would give. I'm worried about the State Department statistics that I look at, and I think we missed that opportunity a year and a half ago. That's what I think, but that's a good question.
I was wondering if I could change the subject a little bit. I am concerned about our dependence on fossil fuels, and I was wondering...
Maybe the same subject.
Well, what is being done to promote alternatives to fossil fuels? Do you have any thoughts, for instance?
I do. One of the things we shouldn't, we passed an energy bill, frankly, that the oil companies and gas interests supported, and I think it's a bad bill, it results in more tax benefits, tax advantage, drill for more oil, drill for more oil. I think both Democratic and Republican administrations over the past couple of decades, we let our guard down as a country when they loosened up and made more oil available to us. I think we need to make a concerted effort, a war on our dependence on foreign sources of energy, because it affects our foreign policy, it just does. Look at our relationship with the Saudis, and you want to talk about Al Qaeda, and, I mean, it's just amazing. So what do we need to do? We need more strict conservation, we have to invest in alternative sources of energy, and we have, and this isn't easy, but we have to make a commitment, say, "We're going to wean ourselves off of foreign oil because it affects our foreign policy." I'm convinced beyond any doubt that our foreign policy is affected. If Iraq didn't have any oil, you just can't tell me that it would have been such a strategically important part to the United States. And we're gluttons in terms of, you know, we use most of the world's energy, and we have the best technology on earth, and we haven't made the commitment to wean ourselves off of foreign oil. Yeah, I think we need to invest in solar, alternative, I think we need more conservations. We let our guard down as a country since the Carter administration, and I blame, I blame the entire leadership, it's not a Democratic-Republican thing, it's we didn't wean ourselves off of foreign oil when we should have known it during the Carter administration.
I'm David Allen, I live in Concord. I live in Concord. I want to follow up a query that came from the corner there about the elections coming up next year, and from the front row here earlier about the role of Democrats in Congress, and in fact, where you started, which is that the Democrats are entirely fractured at this point. In fact, the Financial Times that I'm carrying has got a headline about how divided the Democrats are right now. If I see a single highest practical, pragmatic priority right now, it's for the Democrats to do exactly what you said, which is to get a plan. And they're not there at this point. Norman Beecher very bravely spoke up in the middle of us lefty Massachusetts Democrats and said, "Hey, wait a minute. There are some other views here. You've heard other dissents," but Norman gives voice to points of view that are not in Massachusetts, representing just how fractured we are. I don't happen to agree with Norman, but that's not the point. The point is that we're not there. And as best I can see, the only way we're going to get there is if we have what you have created here in this small group across the country among Democrats. A town meeting, but a town meeting on a national scale, where views come out, they're considered on a civil basis, and then they're knocked one up against the other to see where it is finally we can come out. I think the most important part of that, besides the civility, is to say it the way it is. We have developed a culture in this country. It's not uncommon amongst all peoples, but a culture of glossing over, being nice, not saying it the way it is. I am really struck at how you have heard in this meeting today, and I am about to advance something here that's going to be felt to be certainly by some people incendiary as a thesis that has to be considered, which is that we are now in the middle of a civil war in Iraq. It's incipient. It hasn't gone full-blown, but if you've got death squads in the government, fighting death squads outside of the government, I don't know any other description of a civil war. It's become very clear from the discussion here, we're not going to provide the troops to stop that. We are going to leave once we get some election, if we get some Democratic spine and get a change here. And it means there is going to be civil war in Iraq. And the more notice that that government has that it's on its own, the more likelihood this thing can be resolved earlier rather than later, and probably, in my view, a division into tripartite arrangement, as undesirable or desirable as that may be, we don't have control over it. And why is it important to be realistic about this? If we Democrats are in charge and there's a civil war, we have to take responsibility for it. We have to have said it upfront. Now, this is just one thesis in the great town meeting that needs to be had across this country. And I am with this comment, encouraging you, with your fellow Democrats, and you've got some senior heavy hitters here in Massachusetts, who I think will listen, and you can bring along, and probably some Republicans as well, but right now, it's amongst the Democrats. That thesis has got to be considered with the sorts of points of view that Norman brings out and others in this group. It's got to be straightforward, it's got to be plain talk, and then there's got to be some civil consideration about, okay, what's our plan going to be? And it has to happen now. That election's only eleven months away. We need to start now.
So the Democrats are going to win by promoting civil war in Iraq? I find this quite incendiary indeed.
That's my old classmate and friendly enemy Larry Franco, also lives in Concord. We fight each other in the journal.
Thank you, Marty, for hosting this and for being so open with all of us. I'm Senator Susan Fargo. I live in Lincoln, and I wanted to respond to some of the comments here about the mental well-being of our veterans when they come home. There's a new joint committee in the legislature on Veterans Affairs, and because the federal government isn't doing enough, we can do it here in Massachusetts, and that's a good starting point. And I will certainly, when I go back to work on Monday, pursue that, because I think we can do something and provide resources so that lives are not permanently damaged by these experiences. Thank you.
Yeah, and that new legislative committee, I testified before that committee, and I think there's a lot of things states can do in Massachusetts, taking the lead.
A year and a half ago, you were doing work on body armor and vehicular armor that most people probably don't even recognize, but fact of the matter is, probably a third of the troops there have it now, and that didn't have it, and two-thirds have some armor in their vehicle that just didn't exist. And, you know, people seem to, in the midst of the campaign ads on carries for this, pushes for that, the fact of the matter is, it was you and Murtha and Senator Kennedy that really drove home the issues that probably have kept our casualties significantly less than undoubtedly they would be today. But I just sort of, just kind of listened into the whole thing, and I really just had a couple of comments. You know, if you look at the last four or five years, I mean, we could have fought World War II since 9/11, and everything's about fear, you know? Osama bin Laden, he wants us to be afraid. I mean, that's what terrorism really is about. The Sunnis want to go blow up Shia mosque. That's not about creating a new government. That's about terror, okay? It's fear. When Murtha stands up and says that we need to re-appraise our policy, okay, that's democracy with a little d. When he is accused of being a coward, that's fear, okay? I mean, when you started your speech circuit really last June, that made front-page news because it was the first real town meeting discussion about a responsible foreign policy. And I've come to the conclusion over the last year that the best way to protect the troops today isn't more armor, although I'm certainly for it. It is about a responsible foreign policy that makes sure if we send them there, we do it with their best interest in mind as well as ours. I mean, that's what democracy is about, and we cannot let ourselves be intimidated or afraid to have a conversation like this. We need this conversation times a million. It is not going to happen in Washington. You know, for whatever reason, I just don't understand why the Democratic Party doesn't organize itself to get on with things, or the Republicans could be so, have lost their way. But I am convinced that in places like this, we can have a reasonable discussion, even if we disagree, and it is certainly better than discussions that I've seen come in, you know, I read in the Wall Street Journal. I mean, it's just crazy. It's like the world is turning upside down. And it does strike me that there are a few things that just make a hell of a lot of sense. Look, we ought to go find Osama bin Laden. I mean, that's not a Democrat or Republican issue. We ought to kill him, all right? We ought to have his head on a pole in Times Square, okay? I'm not a pacifist about this. In Iraq, it's one thing to liberate them, it's another to fight their civil war. And you watched Rumsfeld earlier this week dance around definitions. Well, it's because no one wants to say we're, it's a civil war, it's been going on for about a year, and it's going to go full-blown next year. We don't want to fight that. I mean, but we do want good government for Iraq, right? I mean, there isn't a person in the room that doesn't think we should try to leave the place a little better off. It's not hard. I mean, for one thing, if they steal two-thirds of the Iraq defense budget on our watch last year, that's bad government, right? If you have terrorists, suicide bombers, that's bad government, right? If you have a mass graves from Saddam, that's bad government. You have torture chambers, that's bad government. I don't care if it's a little bit theology, if it's three countries, one country, we ought to have the respectability to trust a little bit of democracy over there and say, "We're not going to fight your civil war. You're going to have to fight it yourself if you want to, or you can work out an arrangement that leads to a little better government." And we ought to be doing the same thing here. I mean, since when did we become the evil empire? I mean, for crying out loud, we have black prisons that the CIA runs in Eastern Europe. What in the world happened? I mean, we're running torture chambers? We had a vote in Congress to legalize torture in violation of the Geneva Convention that has survived World War I, World War II, Korea, Vietnam? I mean, have we gone insane? I mean, honestly. Everybody wants you to be afraid, okay? But this war is going to take courage and sacrifice. Who thinks we're going to, I mean, we live in, I live in Bedford, most people here are from Concord. These are rich communities. Who in the world really thought you'd get a tax break in the middle of a war? Come on. I mean, that's just ridiculous, but we let it, we let it happen, okay? I mean, that's just baloney. I mean, what, why are we letting this happen? It's because people have become afraid. You know, if you don't like the way Hanscom Base is being treated, which I happen to agree with you on, I mean, I really do. I think there was a time when, you know, I protested a sign in Bedford that said, "Give peace a chance," because the kids on the bus from Hanscom thought they were being isolated. I mean, why have a sign like that in place when the kids' parents are over there fighting for us? But you know what? That's our responsibility. It isn't going to be some town committee coming out of Concord that's going to put some clothes on some kid's back over at Walter Reed. I mean, that just isn't, for whatever reason, the systems that we depended on procurement, DOD, the White House, I mean, it's like it's broken, okay? But you come to a meeting like this, even if you don't agree with everybody, you do have some sense of democracy, the little d's still in action here. And I just would hope that the Democratic Party can get its act together and decide what it's for, start pushing an agenda in November, because unless the House, the Senate, or the Republicans, one of those flips over to a two-party system again, I just think it's going to be three or four more years of the same thing. So that's all I had to say about that.
Hi. I mean, as so brilliantly evidenced here today with this town meeting, it's so essential that we get the truth out to the American public and that the public really gets a chance to do what our country was founded for, and that is to have honest and open discourse. Do you know of any media outlet that would be interested in televising on prime time meetings like this that might be simulcast or what have you, Marty, across the country, and maybe even taking it over to Europe and get their opinion, so that we really open this up and we are not only exposed to such limited soundbites as we are given on the network news? Is there anyone that you could go to?
Yeah, in fact, you know what I tried to do for this? I tried to get C-SPAN to cover this, because it really, I really felt that, I knew that you may say, "Well, this is Massachusetts," but there are a lot of different views here, and we tried to get C-SPAN to cover it, and Matt failed. But, but, and I have had some success at that, but you know what I'm going to do, Anna? I'm going to try it again and try it again and try it again, because, I mean, I agree with you. Everyone in the country ought to be having discussions like this.
And I think they're ready to. I think everybody wants to. So if there's anything that we can do in this room to sign any kind of petition, to call other congressmen, to call our senators, and say, "Let's get this on prime time. Let's give the American people the chance to hear all of these incredible things that in this small room today have been voiced." It's high time.
Yep.
It's Al Gore's chance, finally. He's got a TV network.
Yeah, you know, I know he does. No, I spoke to him about it. One of the, the Clarka Journal, in fact, did a piece. I did something for Nightline, this kind of discussion, I don't know, it must have been about eight, probably eight months ago. But part of the problem is, there's more, there's been more substantive discussion here on all sides, Senator Lieberman's, there's been more than there was that night, because what happens on prime time, they want entertainment more than substance. And that's part of, you know what's happened to the news? The news business today is more about ratings and entertainment and all that, and it makes it, makes it more difficult. Now, being in Washington, I've learned how to use soundbites from time to time, but you cannot get at the substance of what we're dealing with here. Nobody, you know, it's like when he meant, when he said, "Well, why don't we have more troops?" That's really a good question, and I don't really, you know, I mean, I gave my perspective on it, but there are people like John McCain, who I respect a lot, that say to me, "Marty, I think we need more troops, and this is why." I mean, there's a good, you know, this has been a good exchange.
But the polls are changing, so I think chances are we might get a chance to get this going.
One of the things I'm going to do, one of the things I'm going to do with the two town meetings that I've had today, I'm going to take all of the, any clips or any of that and get them out to other members of Congress, but we'll just keep pushing it.
My name is Henry Deeks. I live in Acton. I belong to Veterans for Peace. First of all, most important, I'm a citizen. I want to say something about Veterans for Peace and the local group. We're pretty loosely organized, and we kind of show up by chance where the action is. This isn't an organized effort that we appeared here. First off, I want to say thank you for, I know that you, years ago, sat around with your family and said, you know, "What am I going to do?" And here you are today, and you're doing it. You're on the front lines of a dialogue and getting the rest of us to dialogue. I want to speak about the rest of us. As he works publicly, we need to work in our community to not just speak here, but speak out to our friends and, you know, take the time to have a dialogue at the supermarket or wherever we encounter people when it comes up. It shouldn't just be in a public forum like this. I want to speak quickly about Veterans Affairs. I have a policy that when I go to a funeral, I am there for people, but I also check in with friends and family long afterwards and just kind of, you know, ask how they're doing. Sort of like if one of your young adults in your life says something about a relationship with one of your friends, you might say, "Well, how's your relationships going?" And they say, "Well, nothing concrete right now," and you don't follow it up with anything, but at least they know that you care about them and their life. And that's real important to us veterans. There's plenty of follow-up in not, you know, "What was it like?", but just, "How are you doing?" So those are my words. Thank you.
Congressman, thank you for being here. I find listening to all this really quite elating, because there are bits and pieces of viewpoint, and it becomes clear that there is not a crystal policy. There's not something, none of us burned with a cold, gem-like flame of truth. And that might be frustrating, but in fact, it seems to me it gives a view into truth. Your colleague Barney Frank came and spoke here a few years ago and said one of the wisest things I've ever heard, my wife and I were just talking about the other day. He said that, "Poor legislation is written on the assumption of the perfection of humankind, and that good legislation is written in the full face of the fallibility of humans." Now, at the risk of doing something very dangerous, and that is paraphrasing Congressman Frank, I would say, "Good legislation is also written in the knowledge that failed policy cannot always be cured perfectly." We are in a kind of impotent moment here where everybody is looking for the perfect thing to do vis-à-vis Iraq. Save the Iraqis, in some cases, from themselves. Get our young men and women back safely. Have some kind of long-range policy which makes economic and moral sense. And the fact is, we can't do all those things, that there is no policy on earth that is ever going to accomplish all that. And what I suggest to you, and I hope your colleagues in Congress will look at, is to say, you know, the reality is, there is no such thing, and what are our priorities? A friend of mine, who was an ambassador until just recently, said he got so frustrated with the State Department that he sent a telegram saying, "A concern doth not a policy make." And there is an absence of policy or clear thinking at all. And I would encourage you, and I hear it in your voice, and I'm really most pleased about it, I would encourage you to continue to say, "This may be imperfect, but it will get us somewhere, and we can begin to build a policy around it." So hear these disparate voices, but don't feel, for Pete's sake, if you do, that you have to somehow rather crystallize them into the perfect policy. Ain't no such thing.
Agreed. There's an experiment going on in Israel, which has not got much attention in this country, and I think it should. I think there's a place for what I will call a rush to the center, in which the Republicans are way the hell out there somewhere, the Democrats are sort of stumbling around on the other fringe, and there's all the... the other fringe, and there's all the, there's a big hole in the center. Why don't we fill it? You'll get 70, 80% of people in this room to agree. It's just that nobody has the courage to go from the edge to the middle.